All right, let's stand up for a prayer of pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thanks for gathering us together today to make important financial plans for the county with this American Rescue Plan funds. Thank you for the assistance of Mark and his staff and for the guidance that they will give us to help us to make wise and prudent decisions in the days ahead. And we turn this meeting now over to you in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a religion and justice for all.
All right, just for the record, for those that may be watching this later on our YouTube channel, today is the 13th of October 2022, and we are meeting once again with Taylor and Associates, our help in this important time where we've got a good bit of money that's been provided to us that needs to be spent appropriately and also by very specific, within specific parameters. And so we're grateful for Mark Taylor and his staff and for the time that they will spend with us in the next hour or so. So, Mark, let me turn it over to you. I hope that we can see that all right. Thank you for the printed copies, and if there's any other printed copies I need to generate for you, just let me know.
Thank you very much, Judge. Commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to be here with you again this morning. I'm with me Tammy Young, she's from our office. She kind of helps keep me in line. She'll be running the computer, taking a few notes along the way. Do these lights off and see if that helps any?
Or turn them both if you need to, and we can let a little light in through the blinds. It's too dark.
Is that too dark? Tell you what, we can leave those on. I don't think that-
I think we can all adjust.
What we have here, once again, this is a duplicate handout that was provided to y'all. The only thing, this, we're going to be moving some numbers around as we go through this. I know y'all had an opportunity to look at these funding requests, to have some discussions on it. Today is your day. This meeting is going to go as fast or as slow as you want it to. We'll get as far into detail on any of these individual items that you would like to. If we're going too slow, just tell me, I need to pick up the pace a little bit. If we're going too fast, tell us we need to slow it down. If there's anything else y'all want to discuss beyond these parameters, once again, this day is for y'all. Y'all are the ones that make determinations of what happens with these funds. Not trying to put you under the gun at all. We want to move on this just as quickly as we can to get these funds obligated and expended. All of these funds do not have to be obligated when we walk out of here today. So don't think every single penny has to line up if you're not comfortable with it as a Commissioner's Court. Once again, this is y'all's day to answer y'all's questions, to move in the direction y'all want us to. Once again, as we go through this, Tammy is going to be moving some of these numbers. If you look up here, that number is going to change as we move numbers in there. That's going to let you know what you have left to obligate at that point in time based on what you want to move on any of these particular roads. I apologize for the clarity. I know this isn't the greatest in the world, but I think this is about as good as we're going to get it at this point in time. All right. Any questions before we move on?
No. Anybody else got a question before we move on?
All right, so let's start with the first group of funding requests, the administration request. Once again, there's been a request. We've had the discussions of allocating $180,000 to the Regional Medical Center. This point in time, does anybody have any questions about that, what the funds are for, do, don't want to do it? Everybody good with us going ahead and moving it over in the other column?
I believe so.
All right. Tammy, do your magic. All right, the short line railroad, once again, I know we've discussed that in prior workshops. Everybody good with that one?
That was a $50,000 request that was Titus County contribution towards the railroad. Not that it's going to make even a small dent, but this was something that was agreed upon by the other five counties that we should all participate in some way. And thus far, I think $50,000 has been committed by Sulfur Springs, so I would like to do the same. This is not a mandatory, this is not an urgent, this is not an absolute have to, but I think that in the spirit of cooperation with this badly needed short line railroad that we should contribute $50,000.
All right, Tammy?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So with regard to whatever the documents are that they're going to need to prepare in order to get those funds, will those go to you? Will they come to Commissioner's Court? How does that work?
That's something that you and I will probably work together on and then provide that to Commissioner's Court.
Okay.
And to follow up with that question, when we get to an item that we're plugging in down here, would you stop and say, now, let's think about how difficult it's going to be to use dollars for something like this? In a case like that, are we simply writing a check to NITEX and saying, here you go? Or are you going to say, uh-uh, we need to see an exact specific list of $50,000 and how every dime of that will spend backed up by bid processes from legitimate contractors that have all the proper credentials?
Sure. You bet. We'll be glad to do that. With that being said, the other thing that I want to bring up is procurement. And we'll get, there again, we'll get as deep into procurement as you want to, but that's going to be a subject that's going to affect every single one of these. What the procurement is, how we go about it, what the specific line item is. Some items, we're going to have to publish ads, we're going to have to go out for sealed bids, and we can talk in more detail about that as we go through this list as well.
Any of that apply to these first two where you're basically making a, writing a check to an existing entity, and we really don't want to have control over how they spend that money?
Right. The Titus Regional Medical Center, I have been in discussions with them. They do know the criteria as far as the parameters of what those funds can be expended for. They will be providing us that documentation prior to the county releasing those funds to them. They'll say, these are the items that we incurred expenses on, that we're seeking to be reimbursed, and they will be items related to COVID at this point in time, based on our discussions.
All right. What about the railroad?
Railroad, I would encourage an interlocal agreement, and we can check with some of the other counties and see what they have. But once again, just so it's documented, the fact that these ARPA funds, that they will have rules and regulations that they'll have to comply with associated with the ARPA funds, just to spell it out so everybody's comfortable with it. And we can follow up with that as well with the railroad and see if they've completed any of those at this point in time.
You know, for something like that, there's always going to be a need for railroad ties. We could buy $50,000 worth of railroad ties and be as about, that would be just about as good of a contribution as we can make to that railroad, which might, you know, involve a lot of- In other words, I want to keep the monies that we spend upon, I want you to warn us when we're looking at something that's going to get real messy for you or the auditor or this Commissioner's Court, where it becomes almost not worth spending that money because there's so much red tape there surrounding it.
Sure. Be glad to do that. And I appreciate that view on it, Judge. We run into summit situations where it's like, red tape's red tape, you're going to deal with it no matter what. That's the way we want to go with it. And sometimes you can run into a situation that it does get bogged down, and it takes forever and a day-
Yeah, if you've got 50 different components of an expenditure, that's just going to make it not, you know, the cost benefit is not there, we don't need to do that.
Yeah. At this point in time, those first two items, I think we're in pretty good shape. That's not going to present a big issue for us. All right, the Economic Development Corporation, it's proposed $600,000 for that. And there again, that's something that I do think we do need to talk about in more detail. As far as allocating those funds, have they expressed a specific use for those funds?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I think that that's to be determined at this point. You know, the idea there is that, you know, if it were left up to them, you know, their executive director would say, let us put this money on deposit so that we can show a viable company that wants to make an investment in Titus County that we've got monies in our war chest available to help somebody like you. In other words, the county has already committed support here financially for something like this. So there's a good example of something that's rather nebulous at this time. We don't know what that's going to be for. Now, that may change tomorrow, you know, and the time may come when he says, okay, here's a great project we've got, and if you will buy this land, or if you will, you know, buy this building, you know, something like that. You know, what is unknown right now could become known fairly quickly, but, you know, the way that he has requested it, I think he'd love to have that money sitting in a bank account. We may need to change that around where it says, hey, we will commit to you when you have a project, and some of the Commissioners have expressed just that. We want to wait and see when there is something viable out there before we cut you a check.
Right. And that is what I would recommend, Judge. At this point in time, what you're doing is earmarking these funds and setting them aside for specific activity. Now, basically, one of the scenarios you've just brought up is what sometimes is referred to as a rainy day fund. ARPA specifically prohibits sticking money back and holding it. This money has to go out the door, it has to be spent for an activity to benefit the citizens. And it has to be, once again, let's kind of go over the timeframes, has to be fully obligated by December the 31st, 2024. So what does ARPA and Treasury consider obligated? That means you're contractually obligated at that point in time to expend those funds on that specific activity. What we're looking for is the things that we can move forward with, that we can start procurement on, that we can come back to y'all, say, four or five months, and say, here's where we at, here's how much of these funds have been officially obligated and are going out the door, here's an issue that we didn't foresee with this particular line item. Do you want to move any of these funds at this point in time? But once again, what we're doing today, this is not obligating these funds, this is earmarking these funds and setting them aside for the specific activity. Obligating is when you're actually, once again, contractually obligated to spend those funds on that specific activity.
Well, my personal opinion on this is we ought to earmark some money for this. I don't know about $600,000, but if we don't earmark it now, there's no way when something comes along that we're going to suck that much money out of our budget to do that. So that's what we could tell Nathan and, you know, the EDC, is we're making a commitment to you, and we'll figure out the design of this later on. But like you said, I think, let's keep it simple right now. Do we want to earmark some money for this, and if so, how much?
Commissioners, thoughts, comments?
I just want to guarantee you, with that kind of money, I just want, you know, some kind of guarantee that they're going to come in and have somebody to be able to spend that money, that I don't want to have to wait until the last minute to spend it, you know?
I think that if we give, and they'll fully understand the parameters that we've got of having something obligated. And if what happens in the next year really does happen, I think that they'll be able to do that. But I agree, I think that not only are we limited by what we can do with this money, it's got to be something tangible and real, and it would have to be something that the Court approved. And so again, at this point, I'd just simply say, you know, we are in favor of supporting you, but we're not just going to give you a check to stick in the bank. And then, you know, like Nathan told you when he was here, you know, I will commit to you to not spend any of your money unless you all approve what that project is, what that purpose is for.
That sounds good to me.
What about dollar amount? Are y'all comfortable with earmarking the $600,000 at this point in time?
I don't think we should, that's my opinion. I think we've got other funds we need to-
I don't think we should do anything.
I'm not comfortable with giving them $600,000.
I figured if they bring a project up, they may just need $100,000 or $200 at some time or something. I doubt the first project they'd want $600, but, yeah, that's the way I look at it. We may not spend on that.
Jeff, would you be willing to give him any money at any point if and when he brings you a-
If he brought me something forward, yeah. I'm not saying I wouldn't, I mean, we can do-
Well, again, you're just holding a place here, because I don't think that when that day comes, you know, even $100,000 expenditure out for a non-budgeted item is going to be difficult-
Right.
-to do. If you don't reserve a spot here, I think it'll never happen, and I don't think that the county should take that position when we're, every one of us, when we ran, we talked about economic development.
Right.
And then here, when an opportunity comes along, oh, well, you know, it sounds like it's coming anyway, we don't really want to help out on this. I don't think that's in the spirit of cooperation if we're truly interested in economic development and- Nathan's dealing with some large scale stuff. He's not dealing with Chick-fil-A's and filling stations. He's got big projects in mind, and I think that any of those that he brings out into the county are going to create some positive, significant impact on the county.
I think maybe $250,000.
Total? Per year or total?
Total.
Well, we could always change his life and use it somewhere else. You've got two years, what you do, but today's kind of the day where you're set aside some space to see what you can afford and what you can't afford. And if you save a spot here with $250,000 or $600,000 or whatever it is, and you run out of dollars to spend, that may be one that you have to come back and visit. You know, I'd hate to see y'all do anything less than $500,000 if he's got a significant large project. That money is fairly small.
Can I ask you a question? Second phone was one of those fire departments and junk like that, new trucks, can that one maybe be used for those?
As far as whether ARPA funds, and I don't know if I heard the question or not, but the question was, can funds be used for fire departments, fire trucks, and so forth? As far as ARPA is concerned, that is an eligible expenditure category.
Yeah, we'll have an expanded conversation on that topic because things have kind of changed since you were last here, and that could be a very significant use of a very significant chunk of this money.
Okay. And once again, Commissioners, and I don't mean to just keep repeating myself, this is your meeting, your day. We're earmarking the funds at this point in time. If there's an item you say, let's come back to that later, that's fine. We're just trying to get everything we can in here. What we're going to do after today, the funds that y'all are comfortable with, that's the funds we're going to start chasing the other side of this. We're going to start looking at procurement. We're going to start looking at what kind of agreements need to be in place. We're going to report to y'all as we go forward with these funds, with what you're earmarking. And we're going to say, here's what's happening with this row that you earmarked, and we'll go down the rows. We'll discuss the procurement processes that are taking place. And you're correct, Commissioner, this is probably going to move around some. You're going to have some items that are potentially going to go over what you're allocating at this point in time. There's some that are going to be coming in less, and you're going to have some funds, and we're going to say, okay, this didn't cost as much as what you'd anticipated. Now where do you want to go with these funds? What do we want to earmark that far and move forward at this point in time? And I can tell you, we're not going to come to you in November of 2024 and say, hey, guys, you've got a month, we need to do something else with this money. Y'all are going to get tired and sick of looking at us, hearing from us, but we're going to keep you updated on this budget and what's taking place with it as we move forward. But we've got to kind of start putting this in some categories, in some dollar amounts, in some line items, so we not know what to do in moving forward on your behalf.
Well, whatever we put in here, just remember, guys, there's no money being spent today. You can always come back and adjust these, especially something, a big ticket item like this. I'd sure like to see you hold a $500,000 spot in case something came along, because if something comes along you really believe in and you really want to participate or wish that you had that money there, if it doesn't, you're not going to spend it anywhere. I'd like to see you put $500,000 in there and put a star by it. Maybe that's one of the ones we come back after everything's said and done, and we say, you know what, that's not as high a priority as something else.
Everybody comfortable with that at this? Okay. Yep, 500? Is that me making that noise? The annex facade. This point in time, there's $200,000 that y'all had discussed. Once again, this is, help me out, Judge, which building is this for?
Child's courthouse annex, one just to the south of the main.
Okay. This has been before the Historical Commission? They're involved in this? Is this the one?
Yes, they, they're the ones that have given us surrenderings, and at this point, we are ready to go out for a request for qualifications from an architect and design company that would take that general first draft of what we approved and suggest some changes to it, some materials, and help us figure out what is this going to cost, and will you get into ballpark? Is this a half million dollar project? Is it a $200,000 project? But I think everybody up here is committed to correcting that mistake over there with the correction.
Okay. And the reason I ask, one of the major hurdles is the Historical Commission, and you've already got that one passed you. So that's a huge one that's behind you, out of the way as far as these funds. And as the judge says, the next step would be procuring an architect. And I'm just throwing this out once again for discussion. If the architect comes back and said, we're projecting this as a $500,000 project, is this something we're going to look at possibly additional ARPA funds? Or is this something that the county has some additional funds that they would contribute?
I would say if it's not coming out of this, it may even happen.
Okay. All right. So the kind of the guidance I'm getting at this point in time is if y'all allocate $200,000, after today, we start working on procurement of an architect to do the design work, give you an idea of what this budget's going to be. Based on that budget, then it's determined how you would move forward with the project at that point in time. But we would move forward with architectural procurement.
I want you to put $250,000 in there. And that's not intended to be in addition to what we have in our budget for that. That would be intended to be the entire cost of the project.
Okay. Okay. 45 HVAC units.
I feel like we've replaced half of those this year.
Okay. There again, this is an item that we would need to go out for procurement on. We'd work with the county on the specs. We would get the air conditioning firms to come in, take a look at the specific units that we're proposing to replace, and then we would accept bids at that point in time. But it is something that would have to go out for procurement.
Can we have the engineering, I mean, the HVAC companies do an evaluation to see what we need? I mean, because I don't mean that that number is the total number of HVACs units, I think, that we have countywide that have not been replaced in the last three years. But I'm not an HVAC kind of girl, and I don't know.
Right.
And so would that be acceptable?
Yeah. And at placeholders at this point in time. It could be that it's looked at and the unit's seven years old, and they say, you're going to get another eight years out of this without any problem. It could be that it's on its last leg and been left alone. One of the issues you potentially run into is, is the current unit, is it the right size for what it's serving? You know, have you tapped into it? You have additional ducts? Have you rearranged something to close off some ducts, and you no longer need a unit? Someone does need to take a look at that and assist with the specs on it.
And you can determine who that person might be? I mean, if you do that for us?
We'll get together and take a look at it. And there again, guys, I keep saying it, that's what we're here for, to talk about this stuff. And it could be based on the number of units, where they're at, and so forth. We might need to procure someone to come in, and that's their only job is to spec out. This is what you need to bid. And what we get into is a potential conflict of interest when we go back and look at the federal regulations, two part two. You can't get somebody down in the weeds on something as in doing the spec work and then them turn around and bid on it. That's a conflict of interest, because whether it's intentional or not, you're already kind of leaning toward that individual or that firm because they've been involved to a degree. So it could be that we have to procure someone, and their only job is to come in here, determine the specs for each of these units that need to be replaced.
I think that might be important simply because we want the person who does the day-to-day management of those units to be someone here. We don't really need them to be able to come, Rob.
Right.
Thank you.
And what was the figure? That was a fairly large figure that we had originally put in there, wasn't it?
Yeah, $675,000.
Yeah, I think that's on the high side. You know, as I look around, and I think what we went through 10 or 11 years ago on this, I think that if you allocated $400,000 there, that you would be in the ballpark. You know, these are not all $15,000 units. Quite a few of these are going to be sub $10,000, especially because you've already got the, you know, electrical in place and the duct work in place. I think you could come down on that. And, gosh, I know we've replaced at least five of these in the last year, so probably 40 units at an average cost of $10,000, I think, would be reasonable placekeeper.
Okay.
Mark, what do you think about that?
I mean, I don't know. I just see that the costs are ever increasing, and while we've got this money available to us, it's a good time for us to, you know, that's a good place to start, but.
Yeah, let's go with $400,000.
Commissioners, any comment?
Does that include jail units as well, or?
I think so.
All right, next line item is here is computers. I'm assuming these are laptops to allow staff to take home with them. Do we know the approximate number that we're looking at there, Ms. Barbara?
We're looking at four.
Okay.
You know, if we don't have COVID again, we won't need them.
Well, but who would have ever anticipated it last time around?
Right. So what was the factor before? The reason I'm sitting in there is because, you know, in the event we do have COVID again and people get sick, we may need to be able to work, probably just to get the payroll out and the items that need to be paid, like electricity and those kinds of things. The problem that we have is some of us live where there's not very good internet, so maybe we would need to sit in the parking lot of the courthouse and walk in that way with our laptops and try to think of other methods.
Yeah. And in addition, I might just throw out, you know, you commented, well, if we don't have COVID, we may not need them. In our office, this exact laptop that we're using here, we have several project managers that we're replacing their standalone- using here, we have several project managers that were replacing their standalone computer with this laptop. They're walking up to their desk, plugging it in, have a keyboard, have a mouse. We all pretty much run three monitors, and that laptop's running everything. If they do need to go out in the field and need to take it with them, they unhook everything, put it in the case, and they're gone. So I don't know what the situation is on the computers within those departments, but that's a possibility as well if you're looking at possibly needing to replace some of those.
So when I need to replace any?
Yeah.
It's great if you buy them too soon. They sit on a shelf and they become obsolete. I can see maybe two of them. What are these things called? 1500?
I think that's great. Well, I mean, they're good, but they're a few other subjects to handle, just like everything else. What I like about that is being your own vessel to use your laptop. You know, your vessel to that, your extra strength. So when you pick it up the second week, you have less of a warranty card than what you, you know, okay, now we plug this in, we're just like, you know, you're all right here to go.
Yeah. And it depends on the specific individual. I'm not that good of a typist or anything anyway. So I have a standalone keyboard, just like with a regular computer. But you can get a keyboard and the screen that's there, or you can just set it over in the corner and not even know it's there, just like your computer tower, and have your monitors and your keyboard.
Well, what I've gone through personally is one of these all-in-ones where I can take it with me. I mean, everything, the CPUs, everything is all built into that screen. You don't even have the box. And then I just have a wireless mouse and a wireless keyboard. And then when I travel, you know, I'd want to talk to Seth and find out what the limitations are for that. But with ever increasing disk size, solid-state disks, he may say that's not a good thing to do. I don't know. That's just an idea.
Yeah.
I do like the idea of being able to move quickly on the fly and not have to, oh, we've got to go buy a computer so we can run payroll. That wouldn't be smart. But yeah, let's set aside some dollars there. We can talk to Seth, you know, what would be the best thing to buy here? Maybe that standalone will work. Maybe he'll say a laptop would work. But what do we have in there? $6,000? What was that original figure?
About 4,300.
4,300. 4,300.
Okay.
So I have a question about procurement for that. Because that's one of the various small items on this list, how would you go about procuring that?
We can utilize small purchase procurement on that.
So that would allow us to use some alone to do that?
Well, if they are the best bid based on small purchase. Now, you can't use what was referred to as micro purchase, where you just say, "This is what I need. I'm going to go down the block or two and go pick it up." But this would be small purchase, where you reach out to three different vendors and obtain a price from them.
So what was the line between micro and small?
Titus County, is it 50,000? And once again, what she's talking about goes back to the procurement procedures Commissioner Court adopted several months ago. So wait.
And there's also a small purchase procurement record that you will fill out for every purchase where you're dealing with a different area of the state, exactly what, that's the thing you're responsible for.
Yeah. I believe so. But like I said, we brought a couple of copies of it, so... Okay. Yeah, okay. All right. So once again, 4,300. Everybody's comfortable with plugging that in at this point in time as a placeholder. Cybersecurity improvements. At this point in time, there's $37,000. And once again, commissioners, over on the far right-hand side, the column that's over there with the dollar amounts, that's the funds that were discussed previously for those particular line items. So if the Commissioner's Court's in agreement with it, or if you want to change the numbers, that's what we're plugging in over here, and that's what's affecting, once again, the number up there in yellow. So cybersecurity, that's one of the things. ARPA, if you look in the final rule, there's not a lot of things that they line item list. Cybersecurity is one of the things that they state is definitely ineligible expenditure, because that's getting more and more important every day. They realize the effects that can have on municipality or a county if you do run into issues as far as your cybersecurity. So that's definitely an item that's allowable. There again, at $37,000, as far as it goes to procurement, that's something that we can't address with small purchase procurement.
And that would be provided by our contracted relationship with our IT company. And they're recommending that. I think that we should take the opportunity to do that, $37,000.
We have a quote in the hallway. And I'm going to make the other things we hear.
You know, that'd be, in my opinion, one of the first things we'll spend money on.
Okay. Next line item is three air cleaner units at a price of $4,000. Once again, these are standalone units, portable units, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We used those during COVID. I actually noticed that my business officer had those. He's done all the research and so I thought the same thing. He can turn the code, funds all pretty well, because he's in our office and it's locked. We need to cut off. We're pretty much on top of each other. And, you know, I don't know if those work well or they don't. I know that none of us have seen enough to have to do combo in a few days. So I just put that in there. It's maybe something that we need to consider in other areas of the courthouse where maybe some of y'all don't want to do. But I felt it's important that you have that option.
So the three units that are currently listed, where are those proposed to be placed?
Well, I would start this in front of my office.
Okay.
I don't know really where to be placed on that. I think there are lots of other areas within the county where people live very close to each other.
Okay.
You think it'd be a good idea to up that a little bit for everybody's office, like, you know, for the whole courthouse possibly? Maybe put like a little more, like a bigger figure on it, maybe 12,000 or something?
I think you can always find room in a budget for that. If that's important to an elected official, it's important to Barbara. I think we should put these on there, in her office. What was the price on these total for those three?
Four thousand.
Yeah, put it down.
Any other comment? All right. Next line item, grant support staff at a price of 22,000.
Commissioners, y'all had a question last year, a part-time person getting in to support, to do the clerical proportion, some clerical proportion of this as we've been through. And we don't feel that position yet because until y'all decide what we're going to do for them, and then Mark and I will get together, figure out how much time he's going to take that position open. That's a part-time position there.
Could that though extend beyond the $22,000 half a year? Could that extend longer than that 22,000 would span?
Yes, that's only, yes, that's only half a year. A half-time person.
For one year. You could be using this person for three years.
So we're going to extend it to six, maybe five or four years. But I don't know, I still don't know whether or not we're going to need that for a second. But I hate for us to make a claim for all the money and then to come back to you and say, "I have to bring in some additional support." The other half of that is probably something in those deals because, you know, grants are a special item of the state.
We put 60,000 in there.
All right. The next item is postage and office supplies for ARPA-related expenses.
I have a question. I mean, we already had some
Yeah, that's easy. How much was that? 1500?
A thousand.
Thousand, yeah, easy.
All right. We're ready to move on down. Tammy, can you scroll us up a little bit there? All right. These are items that we have listed as shared items among the commissioners. First one is a new water truck at a projected $60,000. Good, bad, needed, not needed? Good price, way too much?
We need, they need bad, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be used. It wouldn't be enough.
I think it would be a used one. Okay. So can we revise that new to? What about the $60,000 price, commissioners?
I think that's a good price for y'all. If we had to offer later, can we? I mean, as far as...
That's up to y'all as commissioners and where you go with this budget.
I think 60,000 would be good for right now.
Okay. All right. New recliner machine.
Would y'all feel comfortable putting that to a used one, or do you think new's good on that one as well?
That price there, it's going to be used. You're not going to get a new one for that.
So used, okay. So change that to used.
Change that to used? Okay. All right. And the price that's currently in there is 350,000.
I think it's good for right now.
Okay.
That's a possibility for a used one. That new one, that's a no. 380, but I priced it.
Next item is a bucket truck at a price of 60,000.
That'll be used also for that price. We need one.
60 good?
Get a good one for that.
Oil tanker trailer at a price of 100,000? Okay. Is that going to be new or used?
New.
New.
All right. Then we've got a pull truck or tractor at a price of 140,000?
Be new, wouldn't it?
I'm sorry, did y'all say new on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What about the price? Everybody comfortable with the price?
Anybody check those?
Jeff Katz, we've been, we've kind of, for a day, we had about 140,000. Yeah, we're close.
So Mark, I have a question. Are these huge equipment, heavy or used?
We're going to have to go out and get something to determine a base value for it and then base it off of that. But we will have to document the fact that is a fair market price at that point in time for that specific piece of equipment.
But is there anything that our commissioners need to be doing now as we begin this process? Or should they wait until, you know, the beginning of October?
Well, what we need at this point in time is we need some idea of the specs on these things. So if y'all could start on that, that would help us out tremendously.
Yeah, before we leave today, I'd like these guys to tell you, okay, these are the things we're ready to spend money on today. And then let's get together again, plan on getting those purposes so that they could get them done as quickly as possible.
Okay, sure. All right. Now we're going to go down to the funds that have been allocated by precinct. And it's my understanding at this point in time, pretty much all of the commissioners are in agreement to allocating $500,000 to each precinct to be used as they deem needed for their precinct. Is that correct? All right. So let's take a look at precinct one. Sure.
I'm sorry. Y'all have agreed to $500,000 for each. But if we're going to have to set somebody aside for the fire department before we talk about 500 each, do we need to adjust that number to 250 or 300 or whatever number you want to do? Because I just feel like it's my responsibility to caution you before you begin making plans that if you understand the fire department, you may need to be there before we discuss each individual item.
Comment? And commissioners, I'm a little bit in the dark on this as it relates to the fire department and so forth. So I don't know exactly.
This is going to be changed anytime, right? Even if we didn't discuss 500,000 right now, maybe it could be, if we decided to do a fire department later on, this is not set in stone. I mean, we can pull whatever we have to.
Yeah. Once again, we are earmarking these funds at this point in time. As the judge said, before we leave today, hopefully we can go back through this list and y'all can say, "This is what you, we want you to move on right now." So as we look at each precinct, if there's equipment that you're saying, "I want that, let's get started on it, let's start looking at procurement," then we're going to start moving forward with that procurement. So the farther we get into this with these funds, then the harder it is going to be to move it.
I think you'll find that as we get to the bottom of this, we've made a really, pretty good dent at this 6.11. You know, they kick an item like it's going to be required for a county fire department. I think you ought to, I think you ought to start plugging in some numbers there because that's going to probably impact what you've got available, you know, within the shared items list or within each of your, in each of your departments. So maybe we can leave that discussion for the end when we see what we've worked through here, what's left. Maybe there'll be a half million dollars left. I think it'll probably take more than that. But we'll make that our, we'll cap that off with that fire department discussion.
Okay. All right. So back to precinct one. Once again, we're looking at a total of 500,000, 170,000 for road materials, 120,000 for two new backhoes.
Can you switch that to one backhoe?
I sure can.
It's going to be one, not two.
We were talking about that on the way up here, and I told Tammy, I might want to buy a couple of those if you can get them for 60 grand a page.
I need two or three of them.
All right. There again, just to give y'all a little information, procurement, procurement's going to be involved. It's going to be sealed bid procurement. The specs that we'll get together and we'll work with you on, we cannot specify a specific backhoe. We can specify a horsepower range. You cannot specify a specific horsepower, knowing that Case is the only one that makes that horsepower. So you've gone around and said, "Case is the only one that can propose on this." You can specify 80 to 90 horsepower, one yard bucket, whatever specs you need. But you cannot specify a specific one, because once again, this does have to be a competitive proposal.
Can you call them and say, "Hey, take a visit, we'll look, look at the back end, send a bid?"
Do you say, "Can you call them?" It's encouraged to reach out. We want as many people as...
No, you need to get a chance to look at something.
Right, right.
The first thing you, first thing you can do would be to establish your ground or say, you know, minimum 80 horsepower or something like that, and let them get as close to that as they can. They can bid 120 horse if they want.
Right.
They'll probably won't get it.
Pretty normal bidding procedure there, if we do.
Right, yeah. So once you've established the specs on it, then it does have to be published in the paper. At the same time, we want a list of vendors that we can reach out to and say, "We want you to know that this opportunity is out there." When you're dealing with the government, the more people you can have that have expressed When you're dealing with the government, the more people you can have that have expressed an interest that propose on something like this, the better the comfort level is.
Well, listen, Mark, well, listen, if we, I mean, I know there's two, three, three of us, I think, that are looking at backhoe. That ought to give us a better price if we all go the same.
Yeah.
You know, have the same specs and all for.
Yeah, so.
Expecting each individual.
With the same specs, if you wanna bid it out as three backhoes with the hopes that you can get a better price, that's an option. Buy board, HAC, I'm not gonna say, you can definitely do it, I'm not gonna say you can't. There again, procurement procedures, when we're looking at either one of those or any other cooperative like that, we have to obtain the documentation of what did you do to procure this price. They have to go through the same process that would have to be gone through here locally if you were going out for bids. We've gotta have copies of those newspaper advertisements, we've gotta have a copy of the request for proposal. They must have a firm fixed price in there, and that's something that we're seeing less and less of with these cooperatives because nobody is wanting to hold a firm price for a year or a two-year contract on as crazy as the economy is right now. But that is one of the requirements of federal regulation two part two hundred is these bids must be a firm fixed price. But if that's an interest y'all have, we can definitely take a look at that if.
Helps us too when we're working on our equipment. If we all have the same type, some of us have the same types of dump trucks, about three models we use and backhoe already. It just helps us to get our parts there, we need extra blades, we always can interchange parts and things from one, that's answers.
Alright, let's see, where are we at? We down to dump truck, sixty thousand dollars?
I may have shot myself low on that one, I'm not real sure on that sixty thousand, we might look back to do, I mean, to use possibly.
Okay. Alright, and then we've got down a new side cutting machine at a hundred and fifty thousand?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Alright, precinct two, we've got road material and equipment.
Scratch that line.
Scratch that line? Alright, Tammy, can you just put a line through that?
So, back in that line, can the digger bring that on, you see that?
Yes, I'm clearing that up, so I'm taking some stuff out, so I'm not taking too much.
Okay.
Okay, alright, yeah, and what that negative means is that puts him thirty-five thousand over the five hundred thousand dollar margin. Alright, next line item is a five to six yard automatic dump truck at a hundred thousand?
Probably, probably ninety thousand. You know, just want to get a new one.
Okay. Alright, and then a new backhoe at a hundred and thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
Pretty close.
Alright, goose neck trailer?
We'll scratch that.
Scratch that?
Amen, brother.
Alright, motor grader, a hundred and twenty horsepower with a twelve foot blade and air conditioned cab, two hundred thousand?
Be used or new?
That'd be new, except it'd be a size smaller.
Alright, and then we got a new one ton diesel duly eighty-five thousand?
I'm gonna change that to a molding tractor.
Okay.
About seventy-five horsepower or so, at seventy-five thousand.
Alright, I'm trying to keep up this in my head, I think that's got you forty thousand under?
Four hundred and ninety-five, four right there.
Uh. Alright.
So, if we might go like at eighty thousand on the molding tractor, I just would round it up to even five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Before you go to line.
I'm estimating.
Before we go to the next one, can I back up the mine real fast?
I'm sorry.
Can I back up to precinct one real fast?
Yes, sir, are we good on precinct two?
Yes.
Alright, yes, sir.
That new, that dump truck, I'd like to switch it back to new and add forty thousand to it, but take away from, uh, forty out of the road materials.
Okay.
And I'd be comfortable with that.
Alright, so a hundred thousand on the dump truck?
Yes.
And a hundred and thirty on the road materials?
Yes.
Alright, precinct three, road materials and equipment at three hundred and ninety? Thirty-two foot hydraulic closed goose neck dovetail trailer at thirty thousand?
Uh, on that, well, the maintainer asked for is down here on the Titus County other public deal, the motor grader.
Uh-huh.
That needs to be up there with mine.
Okay.
And, uh, but, uh, and the fire department, I guess should be down on that one.
Okay, it was just a minute to tweak these. Well, we wanna take the motive and move it up three. And then.
Cause we're, we're ninety-three model.
Alright, the Sugar Hill Fire Department put it in the other. Swap those two out, in other words.
Right.
I've got a question, whenever we buy these items and then we, like say we sell a dump truck or a backhoe, where does that money go to when we sell our equipment and how does that work?
Uh, if you sell it prior to the contract end date, or December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, that is considered program income, that money has to go back into the ARCA funding for the county. If it's sold after that, it's not looked at.
That's just on this.
Your fund, your fund, but if it's not, as long as it's not bought by ARCA.
I mean, even though we're using ARCA, but they bought the, the body of equipment, it still goes back into my fund?
Yeah, as long as you don't sell that piece of equipment, like if you sell your old equipment we already bought, it's, it does, it goes back into your fund, but it's, as long as we don't sell this ARCA money funded with a machinery, we're okay.
I guess the same thing, if you wanna trade a tractor for a newer tractor, same difference. Just wanted to, our money is on the new tractor for spending.
Alright, we get, did we get there Tammy?
I believe in yours, like, you're leaving.
So on the motor grader, we need to put in two hundred and sixty-five thousand? Alright, so hang on, hang on just a minute.
Leave it a hundred and thirty.
Now, the fire department, you got it down there at ten thousand, you got it plugged in? Well, we'll plug it in later, but, okay, alright, okay, alright, I'm up with you now. Alright, so back to precinct three?
Cause right now, that's the biggest item, you know, that I really gonna, you know, be pushing for. But, you know, if I can get to, with the outcome of the fire department, like I said, that would be the main deal that I just spend and be done with it.
Yeah, okay.
But I'd like to have it in camp with this other, I'd like to keep it too, though.
So we've got the pull truck, you'd have seventy thousand for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, Tammy, I can't read. You talking about the color?
Yeah.
That, that's fine, that's.
It's a different color.
Alright, so what do we have in our total on precinct three right now? I can't make that out.
That top be a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
The top one?
Yes, ma'am.
The road material?
Yes, ma'am.
The thirty thousand for the trailer?
Yes, ma'am.
Two sixty-five for the road ranger?
Yes, ma'am.
And seventy thousand for the pull truck?
Yes, ma'am.
That's four hundred and ninety thousand.
Okay. Hundred and thirty-five, okay, came in this morning.
So, is that, that trailer's at new?
Yes. Oh, yeah, they, they're expensive too.
Y'all have to bear with her, she's a little OCD and us driving her nuts at that point. Alright, we'll, we'll get there with that one, alright, down to precinct four. Alright, we got road materials and equipment in at two hundred and forty thousand? We've got two six yard dump trucks at a hundred and sixty?
Uh, let's, let's up that to two hundred.
Okay.
And the backhoe to one twenty and then the rest of it in the road material.
Okay.
Which it should be, what, one eighty?
Best I can tell, that's, that's just fuzzy to me, I don't know if that's my cataracts kicking in or. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's a lot better.
Yeah.
Shoot, you better than my optometrist. Alright, uh, alright, so that's the four precincts, everybody good at this point in time? Alright. What that's got is at, at this point in time, one million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand four dollars left. Moving down to the next items, we've got the chip seal at the parking lot at the extension office for eight thousand? Now, is this materials only, I'm assuming?
Yes, we use county labor.
Okay.
The oil that we use and the paper out on the top.
Alright, Tammy, can you, can you move that up just a little bit, so? Alright, then we got the maintenance shop additional tools and equipment at thirty thousand?
Yeah, we're going to plug that in, that's, that's, that sounds good for now.
Crane truck at eighty-five thousand?
It's gonna be a used one.
Okay. And that's, on y'all's sheet, let's just go ahead and get these other two and then we'll come back to the fire department and we'll keep it in order with what y'all have in front of you. We've got chip seal, fourteen miles of roadway in the city of Taoco, three hundred and fifty thousand? Now, is that county equipment and labor?
Yeah.
Or is that contractor?
It's county equipment and labor and that's all materials.
Okay. Alright, we've got four generators at the Trispecial Utility District for five hundred thousand?
Yes.
Alright, now let's back up to the Sugar Hill Fire Department, that's the one that we've moved down earlier today. And initially we had in, I think it was ten thousand on that?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Alright, based on those calculations, right now, we've got nine hundred and ninety-two thousand. But we don't have earmarked or anything.
That's what I think you'll need for a startup fire department.
What was that total, one fifty, five one seven nine?
What's what?
The total on the five hundred, five million, one hundred and seven?
One seventy-nine, three hundred.
Three hundred, okay.
And the difference in that and the six point three we're getting is the, is the fee to trade our associates. That's that up there on the very first page at the top. But that's already, but that's already been taken out of there.
Yeah, that's, that's the hundred and ninety. So, then you've got the combination of. At this point in time, what's your earmark plus what you, or what you earmark plus what's left would be the remainder. So we wanna put the line item in, uh, right down here and put the remainder of those funds in there at this point in time for the fire department?
That's for discussion, have you got, for you guys that have looked at equipment needs for a startup, what are some of the major pieces you're gonna need and what do you think?
Engine's gonna be the biggest part.
Facility and engine.
Well, I actually had to look at building station as well.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Let me put a line in there? Yeah, add a line.
Once we figure out what we're gonna need, if that, that fire department does come into play on that, we can pull, we can scratch a lot, some of these items we don't need either if we wanted to, right, to bring up the, what we need to pay for it.
Yes, sir.
Well, earmark, earmark what you, exactly what you really need.
Yeah, and once again, at some point in time, we're gonna have to say, well, we're too far down the road with this one, you know, we're, we're in play on it, so.
Hopefully we'll know something within a week or two.
Okay. So just so, I have a general idea, are we talking about one central fire station? Are we talking, already have a property, already have a building?
I think it'll have to be, I think it'll have to be one location for, for now, for this initial startup.
Okay. Do you have property?
Yes, we do have.
Okay. Fire trucks, y'all gonna need those or?
We're gonna have to have a brush truck and a engine and a tanker. But we've got, you know, the, most of it can be on a grant. There are a lot of grants they set out there if we have to come to this deal. And if we have, we got like a fire truck and a building that we can, uh, there are grants out there that we can, uh, try for, you know, and everything, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's definitely grants out there, uh, through the Department of Agriculture, there's one referred to as the FAST program. We did assist the city of Athens a couple of years ago with the brush truck through that, to give you some idea. It's, it's a nice truck, uh, but it was a little over five hundred thousand dollars.
So is it, if we, would you handle the, uh, this or do we have somebody else? Like, go out for grants for this, would you, would, you would do it right here with the, the ARCA money or we need to go somebody else?
Now, with, with ARCA money, we would assist with it, if you're looking at one of the other grant. If you're looking at one of the other grant opportunities, there again, you're back to procurement. Grant administrators have to be procured just like equipment does.
Right, yes.
We'd be more than happy to, to assist the county in any way we can. That particular grant program, I can tell you, we submitted four applications this past year for the FAST program. They're projecting to fund six applications statewide. So it's very competitive. Uh, and I don't, I don't want to give you false hopes or get you, get you hopes.
Well, yeah, we talked to, uh, some people and they said that since, uh, you know, you got to kind of arm, leg up on everything since you're starting out new. So, uh... But I didn't know, we just didn't know who we need to go for grant writers to go to help us. They, there's, they told us there's several different grants that we could apply for.
Yeah.
And he, uh, we, uh, he was sound positive about it.
You think we ought to set aside every bit of what's left then? Think that's conservative?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, because, you know, it's better to have it and not have any at all. Because we don't know what, what holds the future, whether we get something or not. But I'd rather be on the safe side than the... You know, just like this here, if I had to cut back on mine, I could be glad to cut back on mine.
I would too.
If I have to, you know, if I had to do it, I would cut back. But my main deal is I just, you know, I need a motivator, that's my main priority. I'm telling, I'm telling you that right now.
Okay. So at this point in time, is everybody comfortable with setting aside the, the balance of the, what we're projecting?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Jody, you got numbers on them, I can't see them.
One of the reasons I brought Tammy along is because I'd still be fumbling with this this time of March trying to get all those numbers in there.
So Barbara, on that, well, this money here, ARCA money, and plus, say if we did have to go out on our own, we'd, we'd have that 1 million dollars, you know, was going to be paying anyway, right? For next year, for the fire, for the fire department, that'd give us almost 2 million dollars. Will not give us, but it'd be, will...
If we don't have the city?
Right, so same.
But it is 1 million 192,000. So we can have that one plus this 992.
Right.
992, we can access, I mean...
Right on.
1.1 million, we could get that, that's county money, we could use that along with this money, so we have to...
Whoa, back up, what you, what was that figure you used?
1.1 million, so we currently have 1 million 192,000, so we currently have the budget by the city.
Well, you're going to have a time differential because assuming that you continue with the city for another year...
Right, right.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be available in this year's budget.
Right, okay, I got you, okay. I just don't want to get into, I don't, financial bind, whether with, with the city or not with the city. I'm just kind of, you know, I want to make sure it's going to be feasible.
It seems to me that that's the decision that's made, that we can save this money. It's 992 first.
Right.
Because this year, we don't have to pay the city coverage.
Right.
And then next year, we can use the remaining funds.
Right, okay.
And then we could also go off grants or first grant administrator.
Well, I, we, we would do, if, we would do that, if we did go ourself, we would do that starting next month, right?
I would, if that's what you want to do.
Because that, the, the better the fact...
Can we use ARCA funds? We can use ARCA funds then to pay for the five grants at the ministry.
Now, with that being said, most grant opportunities have a built-in budget for grant administration. So it can be paid for as well. Alright, so as, as far as earmarking, that's got us zeroed out at this point in time. Is everybody comfortable? Anybody want to go back and take another look at anything? Alright, so what we'd like to do now, let's go back down the list and we need from y'all an okay. Yeah, we want you to move forward with this particular line item full speed, let's, let's get going on it at this point in time. Alright, let's just start back at the top, the Talus Regional Medical Center. You good to look forward?
We are, that's an, yeah, that's an absolute.
Short line order?
Yes.
Economic development, we're again, at this point in time, we're proposing to set those funds aside at this point in time. And as they come up with what we feel would be projects that the county would be interested in assisting with and that'd be presented to the county at that time for approval, is that, is that correct?
Just go sit on that.
Sit on that.
The annex beside? Yes.
Let, let's don't put that on our immediate list for right now, uh, because that's a big chunk there that we may, we may challenge if we... Related to fire protection, I think.
Okay.
In other words, let's, let's load you up with some immediate things that we can literally, these guys can use immediately.
Right.
And then maybe the next time we meet, after we've made a dent in that, we go into these second tier items that we, we know we want to do, but they're not urgent. I think there's some certain pieces here that probably need to get ordered, uh, quickly to make sure we get them by spring.
Sure. Now, can we continue down this line item by line item, or y'all can just tell me as you look through this video?
No, let's go line, let's go line item by line item.
So we're down to the HVAC units plus potentially procuring someone to come out and determine what is needed. As far as picking out the units, which units should need to be replaced and something like that.
Would it be inappropriate to use our currently contracted service company for HVAC? Hey, we're considering making a bulk expenditure, not telling them that you're going to get or, or that we have to go through the bid process or whatever. But, you know, they've got a record of all of our units, they know what the dates on them are. I think they could almost from their desktop put together a list of, you know, this is everything that's 10 years old and older. This is the size, this is approximately the cost you're talking about, I mean... But that's also potentially one of the front runners of the companies that would be the company to replace all of these. So we're, we don't want to run into trouble there, so how should we approach?
Well, first thing I would say we need to do is let's take a look at that contract and let's see how that contract originated.
It, it's a pretty flimsy contract. It's basically a service agreement where we are, we commit to use them to do all of our semi-annual service. They give us a parts discount, they give us a service discount. But as far as us being obligated, in other words, with anything that we go and replace right now, we don't have to use them.
Alright. So y'all don't necessarily go out and procure that?
It is a service contract, service contract only.
But is there a pure, a service contract?
We believe that this, we think that we, at a time of these five years, we call it season. And we just did that as a group partnership.
So let's visit on that, and that's something that we could potentially do.
I mean, I think that they would probably do that for us for free.
We just don't want to create a, a situation where it would be considered a conflict at all. So we'll, we'll take a very pleasant look at that and ensure that, that anything that they did would not create a conflict. As far as what they're going to propose.
You know, but you could also at the same time tip them off that, hey, this is coming and they start kind of jockeying for position as to how we're going to win this contract. So I, I don't know. Do we bring in an out of town company that would not be eligible to participate in this? I don't know. Well, I, I just would not want our current service provider to not be eligible to bid on this job.
Right.
Because they, they will be a front runner. They've got local staff, they've got plenty of staff, they've got buying power.
The responsible?
Yeah, they're not a five, you know, a three man operation. It'd take, you know, two years to replace all these units. So they're going to be a viable contender, but some out of towners will also be viable contenders on this. But, so I don't want to do anything that jeopardizes their ability to bid on this job and, and even win the job.
Okay. Yeah, if you would judge, let us kind of dig into that a little bit deeper and look at, see how you're making sure that we're dead and look at it there.
Okay. Uh, I would say the next one, it would be that cybersecurity improvements. I think that's something that could get started on, uh, pretty quickly.
And then, uh, next one down is the air cleaners.
Uh, let's...
What's that, or if you were to back up one?
Yeah, we missed one.
I don't see those as an immediate priority need, but...
If you're saying the air cleaners are like so many other things, do we go today? No, will we do this tomorrow, next week? I think...
Yeah, we, we will, we will. But again, I don't know how much stuff we can dump on your plate right now. If, if we really have some items on here, and I think we do, that, yeah, man, these guys want, these guys want to buy a truck yesterday.
Sure.
So let's move on down there to those shared items.
Okay. The water truck?
Yes, I say yes. On the, everything on this, on this, uh, the list here, I think we, it's a priority. All the items should be a, what we need to...
Even though we're going into winter, you want to get this process going.
Yes.
Because it may take several months to find the units or to get it ordered or bought.
Yes sir.
Okay.
So we, we sit and talk to each other about all this here because this is stuff that'll help us, uh, instead of having to wait upon somebody else using something, what could help us get, uh, do the two jobs at one time we had to.
So you want to look at each of these five items as a priority? Then down to precinct one?
Only thing I want to commit to on mine right now is a backhoe and a side cutting machine. I can hold off on the road materials and the dump truck for now.
Okay.
Say that one more time, yeah, the, the side cutting machine, what was the second one?
Uh, the backhoe.
That's just one backhoe again?
Yes, I took it to one, yes.
Okay.
Alright. Precinct two? Uh, I'd say priority right now would be a new backhoe. Okay, do that one more time. Precinct three?
The motivator is a, a big priority. And, uh, actually, you know, it's just coordinating how long it'll take to get a truck to, to be, to, uh, two ones be the option. But number, the maintain, the motivator is the, the main one. But I just don't know how long it'll take to order a truck though, how long to get there.
Right. And then precinct four?
Uh, the dump trucks and the backup.
We could put out a bid for three backups.
Mm-hmm.
And one bid.
Right.
And it probably gives us a better price.
Yeah.
Alright, and then down to our, our next group of items?
Chip seal probably couldn't be able to do it till next year. On the Ag building, because it's getting cooler.
Right.
And time we get it prepared, it probably...
Same thing with Taoco.
So, yeah, same thing with Taoco.
Can't do it then.
But the main deal is the, the tools and the crane truck. So I don't know about the, the generators. I think those generators would be something we should put in the fire department, but I did myself, it's, you know, it's a lot of money that we could use, but... I don't know what y'all thought there on that.
Look away a little bit on the generators and see what's hap, what's happening in the future.
We have, have another ice, have another ice storm, those generators might come in handy.
I mean, that, that's a big, that's a big ticket, I mean, that's a big ticket item that's needed that, you know, you can spend a good bit of money here pretty quickly.
Probably.
That probably wouldn't be real difficult to, to procure.
Alright, so all the generators, is the county proposing to acquire the generators, install them and say, here you go? Or is the county proposing on allocating up two that amount of funds to, to the water supply?
Could go either way, you tell us what's the easiest way for us. We should, we sure are not going to be doing, we're, we're not going to touch these generators.
Right.
And, and the reason I'm asking, that is something that's going to trigger an engineer being involved in it either way?
And, and they will provide that, I'm sure. I mean, they may have their own in-house engineer, I, I don't know. We could certainly give you Aaron Gann's contact information. Hey, the county is tentatively approving this. Uh, tell me, if we said we're willing to pay for this, what process would you normally go through? And then you can say, well, based on what you've told me, we've got to do it differently. And I'm sure, I mean, they'll obviously do it however you tell them it needs to be done.
And I'm, and I'm glad to reach out if they don't, let's have that discussion. We'll go from there on that.
Let me, let me give you the head man there's phone number. His name is Aaron, A-A-R-O-N, Gann, G-A-N-N.
Looks like we have some marching orders.
Spend that million bucks pretty quick.
What about Sugar Hill?
Yeah, well, that's going to be, that's going to be a priority too because that's, because they're not getting the calls, you know, that...
What was this, a radio and repeater?
It's just a repeater, that, you know, of the, whatever, whatever.
They had some similar before the past...
Well, it was a, they had a base station in the, in God, but you know, they don't have base station.
I couldn't remember.
Do you think we need to hold off on that and make sure you buy something that's going to be compatible with the countywide?
Yes, 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 that's what we need to do.
You know, just hold off on that.
Yeah.
What you think you need now may not be what you...
Right, exactly. They're not, could be compatible with anything.
Reason I was asking if we do, if, if we can access that, that we can provide these, to see if the number changes. I don't know, okay, I'll write down these numbers as we're going through. Yes. I don't know what you're telling me.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, I'll propose an action item in a minute, as soon as we're done discussing.
Yeah, now, and we can go ahead and discuss that right now?
Yeah, let's do, yeah, let's get as much done to help you move forward with these items as we can.
All right. So let's just kind of go through them. Titus County Regional Center, I will reach out to them if y'all are okay with that. We will discuss the items that they were proposing, and we will coordinate with them on creating a draft agreement to that effect, and y'all will come back and tweak it to see if that. Same thing on the short line railroad. We will reach out there and see what kind of interlocal agreements they may already have in place and get some kind of documentation together.
Well, you're reaching out to me. I'm the chairman of that organization. But that, and I'm not being facetious, I'm just saying, there is no precedent set on this. I don't think that the monies that have given, been given by the one and only county that's given anything was given with any, I mean, I know it wasn't given with any ARPA funds. We just accepted a check, put it in the bank. Now, knowing this is something different, the best person to communicate with would be our attorney who is out of Tyler. In fact, you may know him. You may, do you know Ron Stutes?
Yeah. Matter of fact, they're our attorney.
Okay. Well, Ron would be exactly who I would turn you over to on that. And Ron will draft something at the, and we'll pay him out of the tax funds to do that. And that might enable him to come up with some kind of a template that we can then present to the other counties and say, here's how Titus County has done it. We don't need to reinvent the wheel for each of you, but take this back to your commissioner's court, and if you're ready to give some money for, for ARPA funds, here's how you're going to do it.
And so once again, just for clarification, y'all are good with us to reach out to Ron and start coordinating that process?
I am.
Yes.
Okay, and then the next thing we have now, cybersecurity. Let's, you and I get together on that, take a look at it, see what kind of current arrangement she's got with that I T guy, and we'll go.
Yeah, and I can't imagine in that situation, us wanting to use anybody but the guys that know this system inside and out, have been our primary IT provider for 15 years. You know, in other words, I don't want to bring somebody else in who's going to dump their equipment and software onto our service company that we have a great relationship with.
And we'll talk in more detail about the current arrangement and how that came about, so we'll make sure we've got all of our notes and we're up on my hands. All right, and then we get down to the shared items. As far as that equipment, we're going to need specs on each one of those things. And what we're looking at, like the water truck as an example, are we talking 5,000 gallons, 10,000 gallons? What are we going to have to have on that truck?
I think it's five, yeah, the 5,000, ain't it?
Do you want to assign just one of each of you to work on one of these specific pieces? Who's most familiar with the water truck specs?
Jeff, probably. Jeff, Jeff knows all the ins and outs, about it. So we could get him to get specs on, on the water truck.
Who will, who will talk to Jeff and say, hey, this is what we need you to do. Get us as much detail as you can, and maybe some example, maybe two or three examples of something he's found on the internet that would match that. And that's going to be a new item, not a, not a used item, right?
Uh, no, that will be used on at that price. It's 60 will be used on.
Okay, let's just get Jeff to do the specs on that.
I've got some specs at the office on the, on the reclaim, that homemade reclaim that we looked at. I've got some of those specs, I think, at the office.
Okay. So you can get, you can get that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Who's our bucket truck expert?
I have done some checking, quite a bit of checking on bucket truck, but not enough to get any real specs or anything on it. I know some of them, but.
Well, okay, can, will you, will you do that one or get Jeff to do that?
I'll do it.
And who's our oil tanker trailer guy?
We got it. Give Jeff, maybe call somebody.
Well, I think he, I think he. I think Jeff, only it and the, the pull truck, the tractor.
He may be your main, primary source on all this, if he can start putting that together.
And I apologize on the, on the planter machine, did you have that on that?
Well, this is our maintenance guy that runs our maintenance shop. I'm just making sure we've got somebody that will start putting these specs together for you, not necessarily somebody you need to call. Let us start the process and then provide for you what, what he puts together.
So are we using equipment? I mean, he did not what he wanted, but when you look for used equipment, there might not, you might not find whatever reason that you want. So how's that, how's that, are we using general specs or?
Yeah, we need, we need general specs right now.
So like, do they need to contact vendors since I have all the other lots? Or what do you, what do you suggest?
Let's go with the general specs, and, and most of the entities we're working with, they're going with the new items. So let me do a little more research with you. But there again, as you say, we're dealing with huge equipment. And long as it's going to meet your, your basic requirement, you don't have to have a huge cover of this and that. You've got, you've got to take what's available that's out there that you're using. And the question was, what happens when the equipment wears out and it's sold? Once again, that goes back to the ARPA contract itself. The contract goes through December 2026. If the equipment or anything else that's purchased, used through ARPA funds, is sold prior to that day, then that is considered program income. That will go back into the ARPA account here within the county. Those funds would have to be reprogrammed for additional ARPA eligible activities. After that's done, after that day, December 31st, 2026, the treasury does not look at that those funds.
So they'll, they'll be, at 2026, they, they can't reach.
We can do whatever.
Most time it'll, we're hoping this equipment will last. Like I got a 93 model maintainer, so it'll, it'll, it'll surpass the.
Yeah, but sometime, some point in time it is going to, going to wear out.
Right. Right, but it goes back to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, after 2026, whatever happens with those funds goes back to the county. Same thing with what we consider anything you do that would generate program income, which the list that we've gone over today, there is nothing there that would generate program income as such a monthly basis that we would have to look at.
The generators, did they say like yours?
We're on work, I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're down to precinct one, the backhoe. Now, all the backhoes we discussed today, are we looking at basically the same size, same?
Yes.
So, so if we could get the specs together, three of those.
I have got the specs here on, on what I was looking at, right here, that I've looked up. It's basically similar to the one I've got now. And it's got all the specs, everything on it. The only thing that I'm not seeing on this is a clam on the front bucket. It's the only thing that I'm not seeing on, that they've got specked out here.
Wouldn't they call it a four-way bucket?
Huh?
They call it a four-way bucket, where that bucket opens up.
Clam bucket.
Just clam, yeah, just clam bucket.
Because you're going to have to have it regardless.
Yeah. So as far as the specs that you're looking at, is that something y'all can all take a look at?
Yeah, sure.
And if you're agree with it, then you can provide us with those specs, or specify if they adjust it over there. All right, the side cutting machine?
I'll get the spec, I don't have the specs, Andy, right in there, but I can get, I can get back with you on that.
All right. And then priority, precinct two, is back to the backhoe.
Yes, and I'm going to get a dump truck. And me and Jimmy will work on, me and Jim, the other two got me a dump truck. Just me and Jimmy.
Not the motor.
We know what we, what we like, so that'll help us on that five, too. And I'm good then in the backhoe.
So you want to get, I thought we were going to wait on that two?
I'll do it now, and I think it'd be a good time to do it, to get that together. Those, and I'll be good.
All right, then precinct three, we've got the priority of the pull truck.
Okay. Yes, sir. And the motor grader. So I need the, on that, it's needed to work horsepower. Is this a 14, I know it's a 14 foot mow board, but I need the horsepower?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll get all that, and I'll try to find a pull truck.
All right, and then precinct four, we've got the dump truck and backhoe.
Yeah.
All right, going down to the other paddles, we've got the shop tools and equipment.
I think Jeff. Jeff takes to get us specs on that, and the crane truck.
All right, and then I'll reach out to Mr. Gannon, the generator.
Do you see, we're discussing strict personal safety.
Martin, since I was three years. Had detail that you need these specs.
Well, that's basically what we're looking at, is these are the specs that will be in the request bids. So, once again, you cannot have a detail to the point that you narrow it down to a, a specific manufacturer. But beyond that, whatever specs you say, I want that, this piece of equipment, I've got to have that in this piece of equipment. You know, if on your backhoe, if you want a three, four-wheeler out, we need your specs about.
Yes, that clam bucket, if you want clam on the back dick bucket.
Yeah, sir.
Bucket size, have a diameter, the diameter, and you need to have those pads.
Oh, yeah. Well, they go, it's going to come with that.
Well, the, my, my, I didn't have that with the pads.
Oh, did you?
What, what we're looking at all is, is if you were to read these specs, it'd say that's exactly the one I want. And when you have two or more different suppliers proposing something, they know what they're proposing. They're proposing apples to apples.
Yeah.
You don't want to get in a situation that, that somebody says, well, I propose, I propose a three-quarter yard bucket. Somebody will say, well, I propose a one and a quarter yard. Therefore, my price is high. You want to propose apples to apples. I don't know about cabs, air conditioning.
Do we need to put that on there?
If, if there's something that you want.
Yeah, yeah.
Cabin air.
Well, I just make sure, I say, the most maintainers don't come, I'll come with cabs now.
As a rule, if it's not in the specs, they don't have a proposing. It's not a, Chris, they're not going to propose. They're going, they're going to propose what you requested specs. And there, the used equipment, we're limited on what we can do. But new equipment, we do need to specify as close as we can.
Okay, like that, do you mind?
Whether that's a case or a John Dayer, you need to go say, either one have these specs.
Only even, only even on the used equipment?
Used equipment, we can't get quite as much on that. So we do need some general around.
Like the horsepower, the mow board, and the air conditioning, okay.
We're going to try to get this, where y'all have a copy of what we've done through today, the changes, the maintenance, those changes, what we're, y'all need to pass. Judge, at this point in time, if the board has locked the roof forward, taking any official action or what's been discussed today?
I'm sitting here thinking about what we did. This is an action item, so I'm thinking that. We approve the, one, we approve the first round of allocation of the 6.171304 monies available. How do you word that? Approve a list of suggested or recommended expenditures in the amount of 6 million 171304, and we can attach the worksheet as part of our minutes. And then two, accumulate bid specifications on identified purchases to be provided to Trailer and Associates. And then select highlighted items or whatever as initial directives to Trailer and Associates for procurement.
Make a motion.
According to, according to the ARP. According to, uh, according to the ARP, uh, we want to call it contract or, or specifications or parameters, what do you say there? In other words, we're going to do everything, we're going to move forward with purchases according to ARP. Okay, do you want to tell me when you can read that back, so I can listen to it? I know you're still riding, I just meant.
Part of, for the first round, um, our list of recommended allocation of monies, uh, in the amount of.
Six million, one seventy-one, three oh four. As, uh, let's see, as, and then you, you can put it see attached, or something like that.
Um, here, like, um, bids specs on, if you can speak to, provided by trailer. Provided to trailer.
And I, I'll help you with that final wording, but, but you get the gist of it. It's kind of, it's kind of three parts there. We, we've identified uses of, or, or suggested uses of available ARPA funds. We are agreeing to, uh, begin the, uh, specification accumulation process, and then three, we've, we've given, uh, certain projects to trailer and associates to begin the procurement process. And then we'll finalize that wording for our minutes.
According to ARPA procedure?
According to ARPA guidelines.
Okay.
And I had a motion, but I think it was from Commissioner Applewhite to approve that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Anybody want to add anything to that, modify anything there, or leave anything there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good, I've got a lot down.
Judges, commissioners, thank y'all very much.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Jeremy, thank you. Mark. All right, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion. Senator Harshman, Senator Fitch, all in favor, say aye.